We can stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. We do not have any visitors signed in wishing to speak. We do not have any written communication. Do we have any committee reports, board reports? We will get right into the superintendent's report.
Okay. I'm excited to welcome Dr. Ilg and Ms. Grossman to provide us with an update on physical education, health, athletics, strategic planning for this year. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fenella, and thank you once again for the Board of Education for giving me this opportunity. First and foremost, thank you once again for all your support for our athletic program as well as for our health and physical education. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank, obviously, my staff for all the amazing things that they do for our students, day in, day out, both health and physical education, as well as my coaches. They do a tremendous job of working with their students and building great positive relationships. So, I'm excited to speak a little bit in regards to our health, physical education, athletic program from this past year. The objectives for tonight's lesson here, as I like to call it, the presentation really looks at the three overarching frameworks: learning and achievement, student life, and Amherst pride. First, learning and achievement. What you see here is a couple of... Thank you, Mr. Pigeon, I appreciate it. Always trying to throw me off my game. So, we really like to concentrate on physical education and our scope and sequence from K through 12, learning and achievement, and making sure that our students enjoy lifetime physical activities. So, what you see here within these pictures is a culminating activity within our high school, students participating in a badminton tournament during our winter fest. So, as students were preparing, obviously, for our homecoming festivities, students were also participating in a tournament from the whole school. As you can see here, we have one student jumping up after he made the birdie come from a striking it down, so he's pretty excited about it. And we're also able to culminate that activity with some winners in our ninth and 10th graders as well as 11th and 12th graders. This was the first opportunity that our physical education staff within the high school performed this opportunity, and we had some great students coming out and supporting one another and seeing students participate in a lifetime physical activity. Moving forward, within our health classes past year, and we've built on our VRs and Google expeditions, so Mr. Syrick, as well as our health educators, Mr. Wasbiniak, Ms. Sidebottom, have worked with Donna Freymeyer as our instructional technology, and really have taken a way of virtual reality through Google expeditions for students to get a virtual reality of our cardiovascular as well as our respiratory and circulatory systems. So, here is a picture coming off of a fitness unit where they were talking about cardiovascular endurance, and then looking at how that relates to the circulatory system as well as the respiratory system. Mr. Syrick cares with the teachers, as well as you can see Mr. Fenella participating here in the background, using the VR goggles to go through a Google expedition. Students, as you can see here, use those goggles to take a virtual reality. Mr. Syrick has then built an assessment as part of that to make sure that the learning is actually occurring through the instructional technology. And to give you a better sense, this is what our students will be looking at. So, from here, as you can see from the chambers of the heart, students get a chance to look at the chambers of the heart, as well as the lungs for the respiratory system. They're able then to see, obviously, how the blood does travel through the capillaries and then through the veins and the arteries as well. So, it really gives our students a chance, obviously, to explore through virtual reality as well as to expand on their learning. Another piece of learning and achievement, not focused on our students but more so on our staff, our staff did a great job this past year of learning and trying to grow as professionals. The first is, we had Dr. Lieberman from Brockport University come in and work with our school psychologists as well as our physical education teachers on adaptive physical education and looking at our policies and procedures of what we currently have placed. We also went through a day of training of looking at universal design for physical education, which is allowing all students in an inclusive setting the opportunity to participate in a learning environment. So, a perfect example, as you can see from here, is providing different equipment for all students of all capabilities to participate within the lesson that's going on. So, if you're doing a shooting lesson, here's a perfect example, if you're doing a shooting lesson for basketball, having different ranges of opportunities for students to participate, at the 10, maybe at the 7-foot, and maybe a hoop standing over to the side to help them be successful. The other way to do that as well is different equipment, maybe you have a smaller-sized ball for a student that's struggling to get the ball up to a 10-foot hoop. So, we came up with different ideas and different strategies, and then moving forward, they're taking some of those practices and applying it within their curriculum and lessons. The other piece that our physical education and health education staff participated on was curriculum and assessment, professional development, looking at different ways from New York State, their current strategies to implement health-related fitness as well as skill-related fitness, and then looking at other character strands to implement into our lessons, such as character models, individual enjoyment, looking at the social, emotional aspects of our lessons as well, and making sure that we're taking some of those strands from the state level and applying them within our lessons as well. And finally, our physical education and health education teachers had an opportunity to go to the Western Zone many conferences this past week. I have to highlight one of our physical education teachers, John Higgins, actually put together through the Western Zone Committee the opportunity for physical education teachers across Western New York to participate. She actually organized as part of our executive director and committee on the Western Zone, so she was an instrumental part. Our teachers had an opportunity to go participate and hear from other teachers from Western New York. The guest speaker here is from Delaware and was talking about strategies to implement within your classroom. And then, as you can see, professional development, our teachers learning some different games as well as different opportunities to participate. When I talk about that second pillar of student life, our students have great opportunities within health and physical education from K through 5 to participate in numerous activities. As you can see at the high school level, students have opportunities to participate in our badminton tournament, which I talked about a little bit. They also have opportunities to participate in our three-on-three basketball tournament that's open to males and females. We do have a coed volleyball tournament. We offer intermarials for our fitness center that are run throughout the course of the year. We also do the district wellness fair at your last meeting that you overheard me talking about on the loudspeaker, and we had some student representatives there that helped some of our younger students participate through the climbing wall, such as a service opportunity. And then, the other piece is our hands-only CPR AED training, that our students have an opportunity through physical education to participate and learn. Ultimately, as I talked about, we want to create lifelong learners and create opportunities and activities where students can be successful, and as we know, if that opportunity ever presents itself, our students can hopefully save a life. And that's what the hands-only CPR AED training is all about. At the middle school, our students participate in a faculty-student basketball game. They have intermarial opportunities through the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They participate in the middle school fun run that's coming up this May. Typically, that's done in the fall, but we moved it to the springtime this upcoming year. They participate in the elementary track meet. We have our district wellness fair, which I talked about. And then, we have a partnership as well with the Amherst Youth Board, in which we've talked about 40 developmental assets with the town of Amherst that's part of our eighth-grade health education curriculum. And then, at our elementary schools, our elementary students have opportunities through the fifth-grade field day that's hosted at the high school, which I'll show you a picture here shortly. Project Tases Day, both schools participate in, K through 5 field days, intermarials, our district wellness fair, and then our elementary track. So, our students have multiple opportunities to live healthy lifestyles and opportunities for physical activity during the course of the day with their health and physical education classes, and then before and after school as well. And a couple of things as well that I wanted to highlight through our Amherst pride are those external partnerships that we have for providing opportunities. So, number one, the first one, this is a picture of last year, I know it's small to see, but it's our fifth-grade students participating at the high school on the turf for their fifth-grade field day. So, we're bringing both Smallwood and Windermere together on one field, participating in fun activities for them to have fun, to get to learn and know one another, and then they sit down and get to have lunch together before they go back to their elementary schools. The second here is the first tier of Western New York. This is a partnership that we've continued to grow. They were here at our family wellness fair. This past summer, they were at our summer scholars program, just teaching our students, obviously, the importance of skill development within the sport of golf, as well as looking at the integrity of the game and learning the rules. And then, finally, last year, we had a partnership with Westside Rowing, and as you can see here, we had about 20 rowers come in from Westside Rowing brought into our sportsplex. Our students had opportunity to actually row competitively with a screen that showed a race, so they got to race against each other and actually learn the fundamentals of rowing. So, it was a great partnership. Students got to learn, obviously, rowing and got to do something that they've never done before at Amherst. Moving forward to our athletic department, as you know, the mission of our athletic programs here is to foster the quest for excellence by creating an educational and competitive experience within an atmosphere of sportsmanship. Highlighting here, here was our winter poster that our Booster Club put together as well as myself with our schedules here, and highlighting, obviously, all the different sports that we have during the winter season. These student athletes were actually selected by their coaches to nominate, and then they were the pillars that the coaches felt that were the ideal candidates to showcase their programs. We do offer 45 teams. We have grown one team, as you know. Our Unified Basketball Program will start April 1st of this spring season that you can see here. We're really excited about that. We have our student athletes that are all signed up, so they're getting ready for their competition of playing, and they're pretty excited about that. But as you can see, we have 45 teams that are broken into three individual seasons. We have the fall, winter, and spring season. At our middle school, through seventh and eighth grade, students have an opportunity to play through our modified. As you can see here, we have three seasons similar to the high school level, and we offer 19 total teams. Our high school participation rates, and I've been showing this for the past five years that I've been here, as you can see within this past fall, we had 318 student athletes participate during this fall season. During the winter season, we had 202 student athletes participate. As you know, our spring season is just beginning, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to compile that data for you, but I'd be happy to share that for the future. At our middle school, you can see here, 165 student athletes participated during the fall season, and then we also, in the winter season, had 70 students that participated this past winter. One thing I wanted to point out, if you can go back to the slide, we had 14 student athletes that went through our athletic placement process here, and were actually participating on the junior varsity level, which was a great sign for our middle school. So, we actually typically where we had these numbers showing in the 80s and everything, 14 of those students are accounted for in the high school numbers that we talked about before. Just wanted to throw that out there, just so that you're aware. And our spring sports are currently going on, and rosters are being made at the middle school as we speak here. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Grossman. She's going to talk a little bit about our captains' club. This is our third year with the captains' club, and it's one thing that I'm very proud about in regards to teaching our students competencies of how to actually be leaders and how to be captains, but we've ramped it up a little bit. Ms. Grossman's going to talk a little bit about that as well.
All right. I'd just like to thank all of you and Dr. Ilg for inviting me here to talk about this. It's something that I'm really excited and grateful to be a part of. I'm thoroughly enjoying working with these student athletes and just kind of being able to witness and experience the excitement that has been generated over the last three years that we have been working as this club. Just to begin, I'll provide a little bit of background information about the club. It is a group of student athletes that have been nominated by their coach. Each year, Dr. Ilg invites the coaches to nominate any students, student athletes on their team that have demonstrated positive leadership qualities or that they think could benefit from some increased leadership training. And we hope that with this nomination, they feel honored and excited and motivated to be a part of the club, and that the participation in the club will allow them to take full advantage of their leadership role within the school and really bring about positive change, not only in their personal lives, but as well as in the lives of their family, teammates, friends, and peers. Our overall objective is to provide an opportunity for these student athletes to come together, communicate, interact, teach one another, learn from one another, and share ideas and strategies in a collaborative effort to build a strong foundation of success. And it also allows us as teachers and coaches and advisors the opportunity to support these athletes and guide them in their meaningful role. And then, the goal as a collective group is for them to share these strategies with their teammates and their peers in the hopes for providing a lasting impact upon our school community, while also gaining a strong skill set for their own individual futures. Captains Club is held every month, and each monthly meeting has been carefully planned to meet the aforementioned overall objective and to also really enhance the Amherst pride. In the past years, we have done article reviews of different articles that are pertinent to leadership skills, and we've also done a book study that really highlighted what the best do better than everyone else, and that was called Training Camp. But this year, we decided to really provide the content knowledge of leadership skills through our own Amherst athletic fundamentals, and we have been breaking them down since they were introduced at the Athletic Kickoff in August, and we've been showcasing why these are important, why they are the foundations of success for our athletic program, and how they can be used to create successful leaders, athletes, individuals, and students. So, so far, we've focused on some fundamentals. For example, we've done showing up, fueling up with optimism, having faith, and ignoring the critics. We really wanted to, this year, provide the students with the opportunity to have thoughtful interactive discussions with one another so they can learn from one another and help one another grow in their role as leaders. We have been having them discuss the fundamentals, what it looks like, what it sounds like, what it feels like to experience it, and maybe how it has personally already helped them in the past to become successful. We've also, this year, decided to offer a period of active participation where they are given the opportunity to actively process the information that we get to reach of the fundamentals and giving them thought-provoking and engaging competitions. And within these little team competitions, they have its campus club, it really allows them to utilize the leadership skills and practice, rehearse, and refine them as they are helping their individual teams become successful. What you're looking at here is, we have them working on utilizing faith to build towers out of Jenga blocks, and they also have, you see on the side at the bottom there, ignoring the critics to become successful in the game of operation. So, we have all these different challenges that they've taken part of. Lastly, we give them a period of reflection where they can kind of come together as a group and really summarize and reflect upon what they think was the most important part, and they've been putting those together and creating things that they can use within their own team or within the school as a whole to really infuse and instill these fundamentals and strategies within their teammates, classmates, and peers. And the primary goal is really to enhance the Amherst pride within the school community. And we have been then applying this by putting all of the information that they've been compiling on our interactive bulletin board, which is located in the main hallway of the high school, and it's entitled Tiger Tips. And really, it's a kind of reminder for them to continually look to use these strategies whenever they can, to get as many students as they can involved in different activities, whether it be volunteering, whether it be attending their classmates' games, whether it be coordinating fundraising efforts for students in need, but hopefully, they can use these strategies, like I said, to get other people involved. And basically, we also wanted to make sure that other students within the school could look to this for different tips, and they can look to see how our student athletes are using these different strategies to become successful and then have, like I said, a more profound impact upon the school as a whole.
Yep, and as I said, thank you once again from Ms. Grossman for helping with this. The lessons, if you've ever had a chance to see them, our kids are engaged, they're growing, they're sharing with one another. You know, our bulletin boards, as we've expressed, is part of our school culture and trying to make sure that students know where they can go to ask questions for captains. Those students' names, as you can see, are over there, are on that board, so people know who to go to, and if they're wanting more information, they know who they can go and talk to as well. So, it's been a really great addition to our athletic program. It's done a great job of trying to teach kids the competencies of how to be leaders, because in today's society, we tell kids they want to be captains, go out and be a leader, but they need to learn how to be a leader, and teaching them the right behaviors of how to lead. And that's one thing that I've been able to reflect on during the course of my tenure here, so. Very excited, and once again, thank you for all your hard work and dedication.
Lots of time.
All right. Moving on, we talked about student life. We also have our student athlete recognition programs. So, this past year, through the Buffalo News, the Buffalo News offers a Prep Talk Athlete of the Week. We've had numerous nominations. We had Morgan Halt, who was actually a winner this past winter, and then we've also had, as you can see here, Maxana Grubb was nominated as well. We do our Athletes of the Week every single week during the course. Ms. Grossman and myself, coaches nominate students who have great performances during the week. We select a male and female athlete. We recognize them on our Twitter. As you can see here, students get a chance to win a t-shirt or a hoodie. Mr. Pigeon does a great job of recognizing those students as well during the course on announcements and also on our Facebook page. And then, last year, we also had our Tiger Gala. As you know, our seniors get recognized as well as our individual award winners throughout the season for our junior varsity and varsity, so we get to recognize all our students there. We also do a Female Athlete of the Year and a Male Athlete of the Year as well. Picture there, you can see from last year's Casey Adamey. We'll be doing our third annual Tiger Gala this upcoming June, so we're pretty excited about that as well. Part of our student life, we have to be students in the classroom first, as I always talk about before, you can be an athlete, and this is just a great way to recognize those senior athletes. So, the sections which we're part of does a senior scholar athlete. Students have to be nominated by their coach, so they have to be an important player on their team, number one, they have to be an immediate starter. And then, number two, they have to have six semesters in a row, which they have a nine year above GPA in order to just be nominated. Then, this is sent to, the section six has a committee. They review the applications as well as the GPAs and transcripts and the letters from the coaches, and then they select the winners. I'm very happy to say, the winter ones just came out yesterday, so I was able to add these on to you for you to see, but we've had numerous winners. Quinta Seaco was a two-time winner in soccer and bowling, Timothy Morris in golf, Owen Nelson in soccer, Erica Norris in volleyball, Leah Schutz was a two-time winner in soccer and basketball, Grace Van Buren in swimming, Matthew Mohan in football and wrestling, Ben Nagy in the boys' ice hockey, Charlie Rondo in girls' ice hockey, Sophia Roy in indoor track, and Tess Weber in girls' bowling. So, kudos to those kids that are getting it done, not only in their field of competition, but also in the classroom. And then, we also have our teams that are recognized for Scholar-Athlete Team Awards. Seventy-five percent of the teams have to have overall GPA of 90 and above, so those are how our teams are recognized. So, we have 16 teams out of our 23 through the fall and winter that have been recognized as a New York State Scholar-Athlete Team. So, they're doing a great job within the classroom as well. Amherst pride, you know, I can't go without talking about all the great accomplishments. Our girls swim this past fall did amazing things. They broke five school records, five pool records. They qualified for states in the freestyle, in the 200 and 400 freestyle in the relay. Picture here, you can see Paige Smith, Carolyn, both, Grace Van Buren, and then Maggie Parabek right here. And then, Grace Van Buren also qualified and was a sectional winner this past year in the 50 and 100 freestyle and qualified for the state competition there. And then, Paige Smith was also a winner at the sectional level in two other events as well. And here's one of the many records that the girls broke, as you can see here. Our girls soccer team this past fall were a Section Six Class Eight champions. They went on to play in the Far West Regionals, but unfortunately, lost to Spencerport, who was ranked fourth in the country at the time. But pictured here are our girls winning at Williamsville North over Williamsville East. We also had some great highlights. Joanna Files was recognized as Section Six Coach of the Year. Emma Klein, as well as Quinta Seaco, were recognized as All-State on our All-State team on fourth and fifth All-State. And then, Quinta Seaco was a record-breaker. She broke the career goals record of Amherst, that was at 73. She currently now holds that record, so it was an exciting time. Moving to the winter, our girls Section Six Bowling Team, they were runners-up this past year. They won the Section Six Class B championship last year, but unfortunately, lost by 23 pins this past winter. Our indoor track team did amazing things at the section level. Mallory Grubb qualified for the states in the 1500-meter run. She finished second at the sectional meet. We had Will Simpson, and Will is a great story if you don't know. Will picked up indoor track this past year as a junior. He only had two months of training and was the sectional winner in the long jump and placed second in the section in the triple jump. So, as you can see, he was qualified for the states at both of those for the first time of indoor track, which is an amazing accomplishment. Maxana Grubb finished first in the 600-meter and placed second in her relay that she participated in. Maxana also placed fifth in the state in the large school. Maxana's doing some wonderful things. She's breaking numerous records as well in the indoor, and we're looking for great things from her in the outdoor season as well. And then, Morgan Halt, who I addressed earlier. Morgan won the 55 hurdles in the section as well as the high jump, and then she was part of that relay team that finished as a runner-up. This is a great picture at Ocean Breeze in Long Island of our students that represented Amherst at the state meet. As you can see, Morgan Halt, Maxana, Mallory, and Will are there. And then, our girls team actually placed runner, were runners-up at the Section Six Meet this past year as a team, so they did some wonderful things as a whole during the indoor track season. Ryan Vickel qualified for the Division One Championships at 285 pounds. He was ranked number one throughout the course of Western New York at the weight class. Unfortunately, he lost in the sectionless and placed third, but he got a wild card to participate at the state meet. He went 1-2 at the state meet as well. Our boys' basketball team lost in the A2 Championships, so they were Section Six A2 runners-up this past year. They had an amazing season. They won at 1.17 games in a row, so they did a wonderful job. Our girls' basketball team also lost in the Section Six A2 Championships to Lake Shore, and they were runners-up this past year as well. Another part of our Amherst pride is our National Letter of Intent signings. So, we had five student athletes that signed National Letters of Intent to participate and continue their careers academically and athletically at college next year. Picture here, Charlie Rondo signed a National Letter of Intent to continue lacrosse at Slippery Rock University next year. We also had Caroline Yoder, who's signed with St. Bonaventure to play lacrosse next year as well. Kylie Nelson with North Greenville University in South Carolina, Division Two school. She will be participating in lacrosse next year as well. And then, Grace Van Buren will be swimming for Canisius College next year, which is a Division One program. We also had Paige Smith, who signed her National Letter of Intent to continue swimming at Edinburgh University, which is a Division Two school. And then, we also have numerous student athletes that we'll recognize in the spring that will be participating in college as well. Some of them will be walk-ons, and then some of them will be getting some, signing a National Letter of Intent as well, so we're looking forward to recognizing them this upcoming spring. Another point of emphasis and point of pride is our alumni relations. As we talked about, our Athletic Kickoff, Ashley Fields came back and spoke to our student athletes. If you're not aware, Ashley Fields currently works for Syracuse University as part of their athletic department, but she was a Big 12 runner at Baylor University. She graduated from Amherst, though, multiple years ago. Amadi Kapizzi, if you didn't have a chance to watch the A-10 championship, you could have saw him on national TV this past weekend. He plays at St. Bonaventure, they lost in the A-10 championship, but Amadi's doing some great things in the classroom and at St. Bonaventure as well, a recent graduate of Amherst. He's in his junior year, so he's got one more year of eligibility. And then, Kellen Devlin, who we can barely see here, pictured right in the middle, who was our three-time state champion, won an ACC dual title at North Carolina State for Division One. They also won the championship during the ACC championships as well, so. Kellen's pictured here with his teammates winning after the ACC dual championship. So, a lot of great things that are happening within our alumni relations. As I've talked about as well, we started the Hall of Fame two years ago, brought that back, and pictured here from last year's Tiger Gala, our 2018 Hall of Fame members, Vicky Mitchell, Kim Rusde, Mr. Munson's son, Donald Munson, who was a principal here, and then Ms. Grossman, who was a student athlete for us as well as recognized in last year's. I can't, you know, I can't stress enough how much our Booster Club has helped our student athletes as well as our athletic program, from volunteering to selling apparel to branding One Tiger, to getting things in place for team grants, for donating money to help for our unified program. Our Booster Club has been tremendous in trying to help foster a great experience for our student athletes, so I'd like to publicly thank them for all the hard work and everything that they do, and they are a great point of pride here as well. And that is it. I think I got one more, sorry. Yep? Click to here, sorry. And then, just last, as you know, our capital project concluded this past fall. We had student athletes participating on our brand-new turf complex, and so, a special thank you to Mr. Mark Bustalaci, who worked with myself as well as Mr. Fenella to develop this video that you see on our website. It's a little bit just about where do you want to be as far as athletics? There's no better place to be than Amherst. So, I'd just like to dedicate and show this a little bit. It's only a minute. And once again, thank you for all your support within our health and physical education as well as our athletic programs. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great job. Thank you for being here and thank you for all that you do for our student athletes and our students. You've certainly taken our athletic program and our health and physical education program to a very unbelievable level. I continue to be amazed at the things that are going on, not only in our classrooms, but on our playing fields. So great job.
What is the feedback on the new field? Is everybody loving it?
They love it.
Love it, good.
Our kids, I can't hear anything but positive remarks.
Wonderful.
Yeah, they absolutely love it. They love the design, they love everything about it. Our football team was so excited to see black end zones. Our lacrosse team's, our first lacrosse game, oh, sorry, our first lacrosse game was this tonight. The kids were so excited to get out there. The video board inside and outside offers a chance for our students to be recognized. We recognize on the video boards as teams are coming out, every single individual that's on our varsity teams. So they see their faces, they're excited about it. It gets them pumped up and it gets them committed, and that's what we really want. We want a culture of commitment. And that helps translate, obviously, into the classroom through our extracurricular policies, and it also helps, once they leave here, in the job, hopefully as well, or in school, so.
It'll make the snow melt quicker.
I think so too. Tire, right?
Well, having, having one of the first turf fields in the region going back to 2005, you know, we eventually got to the point where ours was antiquated technology, so I won't bore you with all the details, but I sat through three days of vendor demonstrations on the technology behind the turf.
And he knows his turf.
There's certainly, the new turf is, I believe, safer for the student athletes in terms of impact. It provides more cushion for them, for their joints, and, you know, when they're running and the impact of running. And it's, you know, in addition to all the things Dr. Ill mentioned. So it is, I think, there for long-term use. I think we'll get definitely another ten to fifteen years out of this one, and it immediately enhanced what we're offering in terms of field sports.
How about the rest of the improvements? Because that was, turf was just one component back in there, everything.
So I'll be honest with you, our phys ed staff is very excited this upcoming spring that we now have a walkway that goes all the way around our field, because we do rollerblading, we do some other courses where, you know, if the track's being used for one thing, then they can throw another choice out there for our students to participate in. Our...
Tennis courts.
Our tennis courts as well. You know, if Paul Biddle was here, he'd probably talk hours about how the tennis courts, how much he loves them, how great they are. Our track and field team is going to have an opportunity to play out there, so we're getting ready to see all the enhancements that are out there as well. You know, so as the weather continues to break. You know, from what I've heard, just the entrances, the easy access of getting in and where to go and the communication and walking up and seeing it, people are excited about
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Shifting gears, we're looking at the next draft of our budget for the 1920 school year. Mrs. Wazinski is going to offer us an update relative to any program enhancements and/or reductions that we have for the budget. As you know, we're still waiting on the legislators to finish the state budget, which that picture will become a little bit clearer, hopefully with an on-time budget by April 1st, but we do have a few updates to share with you tonight.
Thank you. As Mr. Pennella mentioned, we're still waiting for state aid, so we do not have any updates for our revenues tonight, but we will be looking at our expenditure assumptions that have changed. We've taken into account some program changes that we have planned for next year along with retirements that we're aware of. And then we'll also talk about our first step, our fund balance projections, and those will continue on as we near the end of the fiscal year. So again, all of the changes from our last presentation are highlighted in blue, so there's no changes to our revenue. Our property tax cap is at 3.01, which is an allowable tax cap and is compliant. Mr. Pennella certified our tax cap through the controller's website prior to the deadline on March 1st. And we will update our revenues after we receive the final budget, hopefully by April 1st. This leaves us with revenues of just over fifty-nine million, which is a 1.32% increase in revenues. So on the expenditure side, we do have several changes. In personnel, we have taken into account the retirements that we're aware of, as well as some reductions and additions. So our retirements are one administrator and two teacher retirements. All will be replaced, and the breakage between those salaries and the new hires is estimated to be about a hundred and seventy thousand. Our reductions are a half, a .5 FTE, half position in special education, and that is based on strictly student enrollment. And we have a general education reduction of .2, again, based on enrollment. And that's actually a full-time teacher who was teaching an extra class, so he will still be a full-time teacher, he just won't have that extra assignment anymore. The additions that we are incorporating into the budget are stipends for our teachers for elementary extracurriculars, which will be after-school at both Windermere and Smallwood. And that goes in line with the transportation that we added in a previous budget presentation. The middle school web program is where everybody belongs, and it is very valued in the building, so we are incorporating that now into the budget so that we can make sure that we're sustaining it moving forward. And we've added one teacher department chair. It was an area that we felt was needed to provide continuity across all of our buildings in that department, so that was an increase of about twenty-four thousand. Those changes altogether resulted in personnel increase from last year of 2.61%. Our ERS rate came in at 14.6%, which was a slight decrease from current year of 14.9. So with our increases in contractual expenditures from our February projection, that decrease in rate from 14.9 to 14.6 resulted in the savings of about sixteen thousand dollars in next year's budget. TRS, health insurance, and workers' comp stayed the same in this presentation. On the general support line, we see a slight increase in our projected expenditures, up to 1.4%. We had increased our utilities about 5% based on current year, and we did get our projections from our third-party administrator, and we were about eight thousand dollars short on our estimates, so we added that in to make sure we're fully funding those lines for next year. And our Buildings and Grounds Department realized a reduction of about ten thousand dollars, and that was out of two different budget codes, and those are lines that have excess funds in them this year that weren't needed. You never know what's going to happen with Buildings and Grounds, but those were the two areas that we thought we could take some modest reductions to help close our gap. On the instruction side, our projected increases are 6.77%, and the changes from our last presentation are some tuition expenditures in our special education lines and ten thousand dollars in our state aid software. We added that above and beyond our state aid allocation so that we can maintain the subscriptions that we currently have now. So we're not looking to necessarily increase our software subscriptions, but the costs go up every year, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't putting that line in a position to reduce our subscriptions in order to be able to afford the increased prices. BOSEs was our biggest change. In our last projection, we were using an estimate of 2% increase across most of our BOSEs line, with the exception of our special ed line, which we had decreased a little bit. When we finished through our participation and we had our final rates, we saw an increase of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand in our BOSEs line, and a hundred and thirty-plus of that was due to one line, our CTE program. Not only did the cost of the program per student go up about three hundred dollars, which isn't exceedingly high, but the number of students that we have to budget for increased from eighty to ninety-six. So that was the cause of that large increase. The good news is, we have a lot of students participating in those programs, and we're being able to meet those needs through this budget increase. Didn't make any changes to transportation or our debt service. So overall, our expenditures are projected to increase about 2.86%, or about 1.6, 1.7 million, with an overall budget of sixty million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand BOSEs ended up overall being just under a 3% increase. So fund balance, this is our first, first look at our fund balance projections for year end. Again, these are a lot of estimates. We're estimating not only what revenues we still expect to receive, but what we think our expenditures are going to be for the last quarter of the fiscal year. So our budget started at just over fifty-seven, or, I'm sorry, fifty-eight point six million. We've received about three-quarters of our revenues thus far, forty-five million, and March is a really big month for us in state aid revenue. We receive several different payments. So this information is as of April, or, I'm sorry, February 28th. So in April, when we do our next presentation, we'll update this again using information as of the end of March. So if all of our revenues come in as we have projected them, we'll be over our revenue budget by about eight thousand dollars, which is pretty close on a sixty-million-dollar budget. The fund balance and reserves are the fund balance that we allocated last year, as well as any carryover purchase orders. So our intention all along was to not spend any of that money, because we didn't want to have to use our fund balance. So on the appropriation side, we've spent about 50% of our budget thus far and expect to spend another twenty-five million over the next three months. The largest portion of those funds are salaries. Our teachers have the ability to choose to receive smaller payments throughout the year, so they get one lump sum in June. So that June payment for us is just over five million dollars. So that's a large part of those expenditures. With those projected expenditures, we're expecting to end at just over fifty-seven million, which would leave our expenditure budget 1.5 million dollars underspent. Now again, it's very purposeful, because we wanted to not spend 1.3 million. So the difference between the fund balance that we appropriated, the excess revenues that we expect to bring in, and the appropriations that we expect to not spend is just under two-hundred thousand dollars, or about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. If we take that 178 and add it to our overall fund balance...
I'm sorry, if you could just stop in that page for one second. I just want to highlight, so when we're doing the fund balance projections, we're really looking at it two separate ways. Revenue separate from expenditures. So on the top line, where you see seventy-nine, eighty-eight, that's what we expect in terms of revenue above and beyond what was budgeted. So that may mean that we took in donations that were unexpected at the time that we set the budget, for example. The second line there, where it says 1.332 million, is the amount that we have appropriated in the budget right now, which is inclusive of the five-hundred thousand dollars that we allocate for contingency for our healthcare max loss. And so our goal was to make sure that we didn't spend that 1.3 million. So then the next line shows, on the expenditure side, we have about, we're estimating about 1.5 million in unexpended funds, then minus the 1.3, we're expecting that there may be a hundred and seventy-eight thousand or somewhere around there to add back to our fund balance and reserves to offset really some of the three-hundred thousand that we expended last year to help with revenue shortfalls. So in the two-year window, we're still a little bit behind the ball, but this is a very preliminary projection at this point, because we still have three months of school left. So some of this is built on expenditure projections and revenue projections, but working with Mrs. Williams and Mrs. Wazinski and going over this, I know that our projections for expenditures for April, May, and June are very conservative. So we're hoping that if there is a change in this dollar amount, it's in the positive direction for us.
We started the year at six point, six point nine million, which matches our external audit and where we ended last year. So with the change of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand between our revenues and expenditures, our projected fund balance would be 7.1. And at the beginning of last year, we were at 72. So that's the shortcoming that Mr. Pennella referenced.
Ultimately, we had set a goal through our long-range reserve plan to have that total number be around eight million.
So with that as our conservative fund balance projection, we can look at our overall budget forecast. We do still show a gap of about nine hundred thousand. So in our last presentation, our gap was nine hundred and sixty thousand. We were hoping to close it much more significantly with our retirements and our changes, but our increase in BOSEs kind of ate up a lot of that. So we are at nine hundred thousand, but this does not include the fund balance allocation that we had used this year as well. So overall, our expenditures are looking to increase by about 1.7 million or under 3%, and a large part of that is due to contractual obligations, health insurance increases, our increase to BOSEs, and an increase in debt service payments that we did anticipate based on our capital projects. Our fund balance is projected to increase just under two-hundred thousand dollars. Our overall budget has a nine hundred thousand dollar gap, using five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars in fund balance to offset our contingency budget code, which is matched by a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure line, only to be used in the event it's needed for health insurance claims. And if we appropriate the same amount of fund balance going into next year that we appropriated this year, with a potential increase in state aid that we're hoping for in April, it will come close to closing our remaining gap. So our hope is to be able to incorporate the same amount this year that we did last year and have any other minor changes over the next few weeks, as well as increases in revenue close our gap, so that on April 9th, when we meet again, we're able to present to you a final draft of a budget for your consideration that is balanced.
What is, can you remind us the amount that we have appropriated this year?
1.24 million.
And that is 500 of contingency and then 200 from reserves. Can you just break that down for us?
It's 500 for the contingency line for health insurance, 480,000 of unappropriated fund balance, 200,000 from our EBLR reserve, and 60,000 from our tax sorcery reserve.
So that's the amount that we are managing the budget throughout the year to not use. And as Mrs. Wazinski mentioned, if we appropriate that same amount, we would be looking for roughly 240,000 more in the state's final budget to close our gap, in addition to appropriating the same amount as we have this year. And then the task would be, again, next year, to manage the budget throughout the year to try not to spend that amount, but it gives us flexibility for the unforeseen or for the unplanned. So the, you know, you may have seen the state, each chamber of the state government released their one house budgets. So compared to the governor, in summary, the governor proposed a billion dollars of new money for education, both the Senate and the... Both the Senate and the Assembly proposed 1.6 billion. Both the Senate and Assembly proposed 1.2 in foundation aid, which is our largest single category of revenue from state aid, and that's compared to 338 million in the governor's budget. So each chamber has about four times the amount of foundation aid in their proposals, which is a positive sign that we'll see more money above and beyond the governor's proposal. But we, there are some sticking points that are up for negotiation within the state budget where we may end up not having an on-time budget. We hope that's not the case, but that has happened in the past, so we're keeping a close eye on that. And all along, you know, keeping an eye on our projections to make sure we're refining them as we move forward. But ultimately, I think the goal is to present to you on April 9th, a balanced budget, as long as everyone is okay with us not exceeding or not reducing the amount of fund balance and reserves we have appropriated in the current budget. Mrs. Wazinski had indicated that having a level appropriation from year to year provides some stability within our ability to manage the budget, as well as hit some of our targets for growing the fund balance and reserves as well, as opposed to having major spikes year after year, or reductions. So there's still a lot that's unknown, but at this point, does anybody have any questions?
Can you just talk to the CTE situation and what you're looking in the out-years? Are you expecting that to continue to increase? Because it seems like it is a focus, you know, it's...
I don't know that I would be able to answer that question for you. I think perhaps Mr. Pigeon or Dr. Shanahan might be able to talk a little bit more about the path that some of our students are taking in high school. But the CTE program is the Harkness and the Potter Road, all of those, you know, the non-traditional core classes that students can participate in. BOSEs bills us for our prior year enrollment, so we get billed the next year for what we have the prior year. So we will be able to better project in future years what we're expecting that to be in our earlier presentations, but I don't have the information right now on how that's trending with our current student body.
Yeah, I think we've seen, I mean, there's a little bit of an ebb and flow, but anywhere between 80 and 95 students enrolled in those programs in the, it has been pretty consistent over the years. But when you have a swing of 10 students from one year to the next, that could be $80,000, $90,000. One thing we've not done is cap the number of kids that we allow to enroll in programs, which some districts do, in, to try to get a handle on that a little bit better. You know, we've tried to support our students enrolling in those programs, knowing there may be some variance from year to year, but not limiting opportunities for any of them. So I think there's other expenditures within the BOSEs budget that are a little bit more fixed. That is one that is unfortunately enrollment-driven. But as Mrs. Wazinski mentioned, our current will pay for the kids that are currently enrolled in this school year next year. So we can look at that number closely to know what it'll mean in the budget next year.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's relatively new that we actually put kids on a bus and take them to these programs and show it to them, correct?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure. I think we've done that for...
You've always done those sophomore tours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that we've had a made, I mean, we've had enrollment since I've been in the district in either capacity at the number that we're at. I mean, it's not a staggering number to me, it's not a new number. You know, we've had as low as 75, 78, we've had as high as 95. I think it all depends on the cohorts that are coming through and their interest and whether or not they're interested in things that, pursuing things that we don't offer as a high school. It's not, it's not a surprise to me. It's not like a, how did this happen, you know, an unexplained, you know, thing. But it's certainly something that we know we can look at that number a little bit more closely this year, when we do the first draft of the budget next year in December, to know how many kids are currently enrolled, because we're billed on a year lag.
Just, the updated expenditure assumptions, just, I'm sure you won't have the answer. Under general support, you said projected 1.4% increase in 1920 due to increase in utility lines, but you don't say what the number is.
With $8,000 more that I added to the utilities.
And then in the other one, where it says projected 6.77% increase, and instruction doesn't say. The reason I'm saying that, because every other percentage shows what the dollar is. You don't have to...
I can certainly get that information for you. I can get that information for you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Say that's it. Put the superintendent's report.
Thank you. With that, we'll need a motion for new business items.
Motion for new business items, E1A through L, 2A through C, 3B, C, D, E, G, and H.
All right, after a second, Mr. Bueller. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving new business items, E1A through L, 2A through C, and 3B, C, D, E, G, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Ms. Custody, do we have follow-up action items? I know we do with most recent.
I have two. Dr. Ill will share the spring student participation paper, high school and middle school. And Mrs. Wazinski will translate the percentages into dollar amounts from the presentation.
Great, thank you. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
Do you have a second to that?
One second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.